How high did you jump last week? He never got it. Was he from Franklin? Or Springfield? No, I didn't. Yeah, I didn't see him. Yeah, yeah, I was watching him. Rod and I were standing at the end there, yeah, watching him. Some guy kept walking by Rod saying, "Are you sure you're not a mayor?" And I said, "Listen, if that guy comes back by, will you just take him out there and introduce him to Kenny?" Because Rod kept saying, "No, I'm not mayor." Yeah, he didn't, he never, he never told him. He just kept saying, "No, I'm not mayor." Because the guy was like, "I'm sure I know you." And Rod's like...
Kelly Gray.
Present.
John Miller White.
Present.
Mayor Costin.
Present. Prior to tonight's meeting, you received copies of the Monday, April 28th meeting minutes in your packets. Are there any questions or comments regarding that?
I will make a motion to accept this presentation.
I'll second it.
The motion made and seconded to approve the minutes as presented on the favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no, the motion carries. I don't think this is wrong, right?
I don't think it is either.
We have signal, but we've got no speakers on the ground. Do we have speakers? We have signal online, like coming here. Now we have.
I've been around Commissioner Paulier too much. I'm sorry.
So the minutes passed as presented. Just as a reminder, public comments are not received during the Board of Works meetings. Discussion will be between the board members and those presenting information to the board this evening. First thing on the agenda is unfinished business. Is there anyone here from Hardee's?
Yes.
If you would come forward, say your name.
My name's Pamela Marusa, I'm the district manager for Hardee's.
We had asked for you to come back because we had some questions regarding the sewer adjustment. Amount of the sewer adjustment was $10,000, $95.17. We had some questions in the timing of when you were notified and when the leak was fixed.
We noticed that the leak outside the back door was on March 4th. The general manager sent me a video stating, "Hey, we have some issues. Water was coming up through the concrete." Which I do have that video if you'd like to see it. She had called me, I said, "Let's call the water company to see if it's on our end or if it's on their end." The water company came out that day, let us know if it's on our end. I had called Gordon Plumbing. And Gordon Plumbing came out on the 6th. And he stated that this was really big job because of how big the water was coming out. So they had to send us a quote also. And I do have a voice recording from him on the 6th if you needed to hear that stating that he came out. He said he'd have to go back, get together to see how much it was going to cost. He said because they're going to have to dig up the whole concrete. They had to have that 8/11 to come out to do this. And I have pictures of that, on that date that they came out afterwards. And by the 12th, we approved it, my BPO said, "Yeah, let's get them out there." It was $10,000 to fix that, which I had the bill also. And then by the 17th, it was completed. We had it all dug up, fixed. And probably we had no one at least. Because what happened was, and maybe I should explain this a little bit. They had fixed the meter, I guess, a couple of years ago or a year prior to that. And wait, Gordon Plumbing was telling me it put a lot of pressure on the old pipes. And that's what caused it to just dissipate in time.
And I apologize, your name again?
I'm sorry.
Your name again?
Pamela Marusa.
And I'm John.
John.
I'm John. So it sounds like you got involved in this in the beginning of March. But the problem started back in what appears to be January, maybe in December.
Right, that was another leak that we had prior to that.
Well, that one, as I recall, because I remember handling that one, that one was back in the fall.
Right.
So my... Obviously, the bill is not being sent to you. It's not like you opened our bill. Who is that being sent to?
Our home office in Texas.
Okay. So, Mr. Dunn, can you, did you, were you able to find anything out in terms of when they were initially notified of this?
The leak was in the fall. They normally average around 500 in water sewer. They fixed that in the fall. For a very short time, the bill went back down. And then it spiked again immediately in January. It ran January, February, March. My, my question is, I understand in, in March, you, you acted. But we always notify everybody whenever there's a spike in usage. So we notified somebody, the water department.
Or at least we attempted to.
And unless it was somewhere down in Texas, it was not notified to us or the restaurant.
We do it locally. And we usually either go to the home, we go to the business, whatever. They're very, very good about notifying. And they usually do it several, we have, we can read your meter, we can tell you down to the minute when your water started to spike again. So you were notified in January. Somebody was notified in January, probably several times.
About January, it was 16,000, I guess, down as what Ms. Judy on the last meeting. February was 32. Then of course, March was where it started coming up out of surface.
Well, it ran pretty good for a couple of months. Because just the sewer portion in January was over $1,800. So your water had been down 6-something, maybe 700. In February, your sewer was $3,600. That's an awful lot of water. And then March, finally, when you, when you took action, it was $6,500, just your sewer. I think the time to move on this was in January or February. I don't understand why it took you so long. That's the problem I have with it. I, I can see 30 to 60 days.
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious. So you were the one responsible for calling a plumber and getting that all taken care of, right? Because I, the problem here is, you know, if we're sending a bill down to Texas and, you know, some person in an office somewhere is like, "Okay, whatever." You know, if nothing's coming up out of the ground, there's no way that you're going to know. Now, I do know that the water office is extremely diligent in terms of trying to get ahold of somebody. But I've worked at a restaurant before, you know, they could have talked to...
I was never notified. Or the restaurant was never notified? I mean, I just said it.
Somebody at the restaurant picked up the phone or met somebody at the counter in front of the water office that said, "Hey, your water's running low."
I have never, ever heard of that.
Oh, I believe you've never heard of it. That, again, I've worked at a restaurant, I know how easy it is for one person to answer a phone or talk to somebody and then just never tell you that or forget about it. I mean, you know, it gets busy, right? It's easy to, at least when I was in that situation, I know I probably...
I do know there was some misunderstanding last week. So I don't know where they might be sending that notification. But I know last week, the restaurant, someone turned off the water and said, "We owe the $8,000 bill." I went and called the water here and talked to, I believe her name was Teresa. And she's like, "Well, I had sent out a notice and I have not had anything returned." And I said, "Well, I don't, I have not seen that." So I called my BPO. And my BPO went and talked to someone in Texas in the AP department. And I guess she has spoke with the gentleman there. And what I understood, they came up with an agreement to see, to make sure everything was fixed. And that he knew we put a credit that we were waiting on that. And then she told me that day to pay $2,196.15. And so then shortly after that, she called me back and said, "Oh, they just paid the $8,000." So I don't know if this is a delay or what. But she also mentioned that nobody showed up to the last meeting. And I said, "No, Ms. Judy showed up for us." She went, "Oh, maybe that's a big misunderstanding," is what Ms. Teresa said. So I don't know, I feel like there's a lot of confusion here.
We do not have Teresa in the works in the utility office.
I can't remember, I can't remember what her name was. I thought it was Ms. Teresa.
I, I mean, it sounds to me like this could be the same issue. It sounds like it could also be a separate issue. Really, what we're trying to get to the bottom of is, you know, $11,000 plus or minus over three months. That I know we, we did, I mean, because I know the water office and I know the folks that are doing that and frankly, they've had to call me before, so I know they're very diligent. I know they called and reached out to somebody. I don't know who it was and, you know, perhaps we need to put something in place going forward that we, you know, document or something. But somebody on that side didn't do anything about it. And furthermore, the bills that they would have been receiving in January and February would have been gigantic compared to what they were used to. And they never reached out and did anything. And, and the bigger issue is, this is the second time in what's...
And I take that back, it was this I had to have ever talked to. Now thinking because she left me a voicemail back that day.
Yeah. So I don't, Kelly, you're being characteristically quiet and wise. What are your thoughts on this?
I think we have a breakdown of communication. I think it's unfortunate we don't have a representative from the water department here and that we don't keep better track of who we've talked to, the date the message was left. I just feel like we need to track that a little bit better. I think that we're sending our water bill to Texas and we really don't know what they're doing with it or if that, even if they noticed that the bill was up in January or February. I think it's unfortunate the business had two water issues. But, but I'm, I'm, I'm willing to give a little grace here to the situation because I feel like we don't have our ducks in a row, but they don't either.
We need to use this as a learning experience for us?
Yes.
Okay. What are your suggestions? Are you ready to make a motion on that?
I guess, Dale, do you, can we, can we, do we have any legal stance to, right, to, to split the difference here?
So, I mean, it's up to you, it's the issue discretion as far as if you decide you're going to give adjustment. You're not going to give adjustment and you want to do something different, is up to your discretion.
Do you have that one, Kelly? I think I'm willing to take 60% of it. What are your thoughts? Mayor, you, you also get a say in this.
I, I, I think that's would be reasonable. I, I was like a little bit more than that, but I'm comfortable with the 60%. Because that would give us basically the, the march. I was thinking 70.
70, I'm, I'm, you know, a little bit of a 70. Do I hear any? Kelly?
But, but I, I, granted, I think there's two problems here. One, like Kelly said, we should have documented who, who our employee talked to, the date and the time. And then two, I feel like Hardee's is at fault here too. I know in my business, if I've been, if I've got three bills that are uncharacteristic, uncharacteristic, high, I'd have been calling somebody real quick saying, "What's going on?" So I think, you know, if we had a proceeding between them, that's a fair action.
Well, I'll motion that we discount the water bill by 70%. And that we move forward on that. I don't know what the right terminology for that is, but I'm, I'm being knotted, but that's okay. So I will make the motion that we discount the water bill 70%, whatever that number comes out to. That's why we keep him around, guys.
I'll second it.
The motion made and seconded to give the sewer dozen more, $7,000. The number that Mr. Porter had stated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no, the motion carries. And we will put a different practice in place. Thank you. And thank you for coming back and saying your opinion. Next on the agenda, we're going to open the sealed bids for the sidewalk project.
We received three bids, were received today. Wallace came in at 1:20 PM. I'll open them first. Wallace's bid is for $970,599.98. Next is Milestone, we received them at 1:35 this afternoon. And as a reminder, what we're doing, we're going to be putting down about five and a half miles of sidewalk this spring.
No, Wallace gets us five miles of sidewalk, that's pretty good.
So that's why we're dealing with big numbers. Again, Milestone, the total is $1,994,335.
Let's see, we're going to check and make sure that the Wallace bid...
We're only...
A million shy of that.
We have one more, we received at 3:51. It's minutes before the 4 o'clock deadline. And this is All-Star Paving. This one is $3,446,326.65. And we ask to take it under advisement or report back to you next time.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. It's been nice to at least get three companies to put in on the work in the city. Don't sit down too quick, we've got the morning bid and the next phase of paving.
Yep. If you recall, we had four bids for the paving about five miles this spring. Paving, we received four bids. The low bidder was Wallace of $668,625.78. We have reviewed all the documents and we find everything in order. So we're going to recommend to you that you accept the Wallace bid.
The only question I have on that is why sidewalks are more expensive than streets. But other than that, I think that's...
I have no, I have never seen a variance like that, but...
Yeah, okay. No, I don't have any issues, Kelly, any thoughts?
No, no problems.
Then I will make a motion that we accept the Wallace bid as presented.
I'll second it.
The motion made and seconded to accept Wallace's construction for the paving for $668,625.78. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no, the motion carries. Mr. Coffey, we have a tort claim before us this evening. Your recommendations?
We do, we pursue tort claim for an apartment transportation accident. One police officer's head and vehicle on state 252, hit the guard rail. Damage to the state's property totals $1,031.97. My recommendation, as opposed to sending this to the insurance company, who does an investigation and believes damage was done, was our officer's fault. So my recommendation is that the city go ahead and offer us a payment from our fund and hurry and expect the city insurance company.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how city insurance goes with that with, with that. So, I'm going to make the motion.
Yes.
And I'll make the motion that we do that. Yeah, we pay it from the city, city funds instead of sending it to the insurance.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded to submit this claim to the city to grant a pay. How much should be paid? $1,000,000? The amount of $1,031.97 from the city to pay from the program. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening is the request by County regarding downtown parking and traffic flow. Commissioner Paulier?
If I can just log in, I'll tell you that I got a phone call every day that my water bill was paid $885.00 this moment. I picture what my consumers, sick commercials, it's some material on me on the commotes. The only thing I can think of is hurry up and break a line out in the parking lot and tell you that it was a sewer. But it did, so I won't be coming back in front of it.
On behalf of Morgan County, I would like to, and I include when I say that, Kenny Hale, Commissioner Hale and Commissioner Adams, our building, architect and building team. And I noticed I even have a couple of county council ladies with us this evening. I'm honored to be here tonight and excited as we enter phase three of a four-phase plan. We are getting ready to redo the county seat, our county courthouse. The county courthouse, just to do a quick summary, was built in 1857. I believe it was 1974 that they did a major renovation. And it was in 74 that they actually made the recommendation to move the courthouse or not re, re-put any money into it. So, but there were several people. And it was best said, I mean, by previous councilman Bob O'Neil, when he said, "We don't tear down the Washington Monument, we don't tear down the Lincoln Memorial, we rebuild it." And this is the county seat. We are getting ready to complete the new judicial campus. We, you are invited, we have a ribbon cutting on July 2nd. It's approximately $46 million of everyone who sits in here and lives in Morgan County gets third tax dollars. There's going to be over 21 restrooms and something of interest, over 60,000 square feet of parking. So we're adding a lot of parking just two blocks over in that direction. All the employees from the courthouse will be moving over midway through July to the new facility as soon as we cut that ribbon. The current courthouse houses six courts plus support staff. What we're planning on doing is complete interior renovation. We're also going to do some exterior renovation. And we're actually going to have it on a wing because we need to get into a 90 through 92 hall which was passed, known as ADA. We are lacking in a few areas and there's just not a whole lot of, if you look at the elevator shaft and you want to, if somebody has a heart attack or a need for an ambulance cot to go up to the second floor. The most I can break it down, I can put the paramedic, get the patient in the cot. But all the firemen and the rest of the EMS teams have to take the steps real quick. To me, on the downside, there's just not enough friends. Also, the bathrooms are way outdated and entirely too small. I tell everybody this quick story, I know the time is of interest this evening, but I think it's important that you know that I was told when we started this project that there was a family in one of the most important days, they were adopting a child. And as they sit up there and they're all excited and they have the signs and they have the balloons and it was on the day, the biggest day in this child's, six people in orange suits and shackles walked by. Praise the Lord, they congrat, one of them congratulated and then said something derogatory. And my point of it is, is that an 1857 courthouse has served us well and has served its purpose. But it was time to move a new, to a new facility. And we have done that. The county is also in need of office space. And so what we're planning on doing is moving many of the administrative offices back over to what was the courthouse for 160 years and using that space. And through two mayoral administrations, they've looked at remodeling and updating the downtown area. And we have worked closely with the current administration to come to an understanding on how we want our downtown to look. And a lot of downtowns surrounding us have invested in themselves. And I look at this as an investment in ourselves. And with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Josh Mesmer to intro some of the things that we're planning on, on doing and why, why we're here tonight and why we need your help. But I just want you to know that we've had a crew that went door to door and we've had two public meetings. We know that this is not going to be easy on the downtown businesses. We're very understanding to that and we're doing the best we can. One, we're having those meetings in public to hear their concerns. And two, trying to get it done as quickly as possible once it starts. With that, Mr. Mesmer?
Thanks, Commissioner Cawley. So like Ryan said, I would like to reiterate, we wanted to make sure that this was not something done without public knowledge. We went door to door, we handed out flyers, the mayor joined us through that endeavor. We wanted to make sure that lots of folks were aware of this and that we put a lot of time and effort into this. And I told this at our public meetings, this isn't what Brian and Josh gave up this, or Commissioner Hale or Commissioner Adams. We've got a team of professionals to lead this, but a lot of time and effort into thinking through all the logistics, how to make this work. And we know, like Frank said, this is going to be painful. There's no scenario where this isn't painful. We apologize upfront for that. But our goal and what we're going to be presenting tonight is what we think is the least amount of impact in community. We had, like I said, two public meetings, there were lots of folks there. There was some feedback on the option we presented, but in our opinion, very limited pushback compared to the number of folks over there. And so with that, I want to call up Will Tybo, he's with Meyer Nation, he's our contractor, our general contractor. Will be overseeing this project, he's going to walk us through the details. Occasionally, I may get up and interject a couple points that I think are relevant, but we want to present to you guys our...
Josh, is it, do you assume that that...
This one.
Okay.
Can be seen, but it's exactly what you have in your packet.
Perfect.
Yeah, thank you, Josh. Like Josh mentioned, my name is Will To Do, I'm going to be the project manager for Meyer Nation Construction and the construction manager of the courthouse renovation project. We're currently right across the room working on the judicial campus building, looking forward to turning that over in July and then moving on to the courthouse project. So like Josh said, the goal in this basic plan we're presenting is to have the least amount of impact on downtown, on the surrounding businesses, and then the city of Marksville because we know how important halftime is. So we'll jump right into the basic plan we're presenting. You'll see phase zero in blue. All that is, is a water tap to the water main that's in Morgan Street. The reason we're showing that as a June twenty-twenty-five start is just to get it over with, get the water tap onto the site. That way, when we are in that phase two that we'll get to momentarily, we're not shutting down that full, we're not having a full road closure there, and we don't anticipate that taking more than two days. So phase one in this basic plan is an early start, and I say early because the courthouse staff is going to be moving over to the judicial campus starting on July fourteenth. The entrances to the existing courthouse parking are on the north and south sides. So we wouldn't be able to start that until they're complete, moving out of that, which would be the first week of August. But like we mentioned, trying to get this completed in the quickest amount of time possible. We figured that mid-July start, as soon as that building is turned over, would be the most efficient. And we know that Jefferson Street is going to have the highest impact on any of the surrounding businesses because it's the only street that we have work that goes on the opposite side of the street as the courthouse. So we would start in mid-July, as soon as that courthouse starts to move out. On that side, we have two storm connections, we have two new storm inlets, three, excuse me, because we have one across the street, and then some restriping and some curb work there. We're confident that we can get this work done in four weeks and then turn that Jefferson Street over to the city for public use. And I do want to clarify, you'll see in phase four is the orange on the west side of Jefferson Street. The reason we're showing that in phase four is because while we will need a construction entrance for the duration of the interior site construction, we plan that to be the safest and least impactful area to keep open for construction entrance during the duration of construction. So after we return Jefferson Street over, we have moved to phase two, which is what you see in red there, which should be the three perimeter streets, Morgan, Main, and Washington Street. And during construction of this phase, we would keep westbound Morgan Street open, southbound Main Street, and eastbound Washington Street open. Our site fence would be out in, close to the middle of the street at our limit of disturbance, which you can see is a little bit inside of what we have highlighted. And that turnover, or the start would be a target of August, mid-August twenty-twenty-five, and then a turnover prior to Thanksgiving. So I do want to clarify before we go any farther that on that phase one, there you see in green that that sidewalk will remain open throughout the duration of that Jefferson Street phase. We want to maintain access to those businesses on the east side of Jefferson Street. And we'll have our site fence in appropriate signage directing pedestrian traffic in that direction.
Excuse me, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding correctly. So for approximately four weeks, you're going to fully close Jefferson Street?
That's correct.
Okay, and then after that, Jefferson Street will reopen, but there'll still be construction entrances on the west side of it. However, parking will still be available on the east side of the street?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect.
And then that...
Yeah, go ahead. One thing to point out, this was something that was asked at both public meetings. So the red goes to the center of the line of road, as we both talked about. Once that phase two opens back up, they're talking, there's still construction throughout the whole site, but our fencing project limits will pull back in to our property off of the area where the residents will park. Another thing I want to point out, I've asked this at both meetings, do you guys have a guess at how many people visit the courthouse each day? Sure you can't guess, because I'm sure it's a lot. Yeah, it is. All in all, when you consider all the staff that are going to leave the probation building, all the staff that are going to leave the courthouse, all the visitors that reach back at the courthouse, because we don't track visitors at probation building, we're talking between two hundred and seventy-five to three hundred people a day that aren't coming downtown once we remove all of our workers from there. So that's something I, to me, that's a big number, and I want to make sure that everybody understands just how much traffic is going to be removed during this construction period.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that, Josh, because when we say turnover, what we mean is all final paving, striping, signage, and then a new perimeter sidewalk around the site that we are planning on turning over. And like Josh said, we've been moving that site fence inside that sidewalk and leaving that open so it would be safe for pedestrian use. So we know how important the holiday season is for local businesses, so that Thanksgiving, pre-Thanksgiving turnover, pre-small business Saturday, which I believe is that, follow that next Saturday right after Thanksgiving, that's our target, that's our drop dead. And we wouldn't be standing here presenting if we didn't have a contractor, a subcontractor that we believe can complete that work. So like I said, one lane traffic would be closed during the construction portion. When we turn it over, all the ADA rims, signage, sidewalks, striping, and then the sixty-seven new parking spaces with diagonal parking will be turned over. And that would include the, the report that that traffic signal at Main and Morgan Street as well. So this is just a quick overview of the, of this schedule. So we'd be starting at Jefferson Street in mid-July, going until mid-August after we turn that over. Then we can move it into phase two, which is Main, Morgan, and Washington Streets, and then turning that over prior to Thanksgiving twenty-twenty-five. So this is just a breakdown of the parking that will be available during construction. So during phase one, and I should clarify, it's on the west side of Jefferson Street. Of course, that will be used for that construction entrance, so that will not be opened back up until we finish out of the site, which is at phase four in the previous plan, which we would turn over in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-six, all twenty twenty-six. So during phase one, we would still keep the parking you see in yellow open. And then the other note that I wanted to make is that everything on the other side of the street, like Josh mentioned, our limits of the service do not go past the middle of the street except for that phase zero, which is just the water tap. Everything else is contained on the inside of the site. So all the perimeter parking in blue, which is forty-two spaces as exists now after the theater project is completed, will be open during the duration of construction. And then during phase one, we'll have twenty-six existing spaces on the northwest and south sides of the current courthouse as it sits today. And then after we turn that back over, that'll be the sixty-three spaces plus the four new that we turn over at the bottom side, or the south side of Jefferson Street. So one thing that we want to make sure that is clear as well is that as we're limiting parking during construction, our contractors are not going to be parking downtown, taking up those public spaces. So this map that you see here, the city was generous enough to allow us to have potential parking ahead of two fourteen or Main Street block. As the site allows for it, we'll have contractor parking on site. It is a pretty small site, but we'll do our best to contain, to let as many people park there just so we're not going to manage that throughout the downtown. And then we'll also be utilizing the new parking lot just south of the judicial campus building, sixty-nine West Columbus Street, as contractor parking. But like I said, we want to minimize the impact on the parking as well from our contractors. We can have anywhere from thirty to fifty contractors on site at a time. So this diagram that you see here is in all of our subcontractors' contracts, their contractual obligations follow this. And then this is a parking analysis after both phases are completed, what we'll have available parking-wise. So at the courthouse square, you'll have a hundred and forty-six spaces. And then combined between the new judicial campus lot, north and south side, as well as the Mulberry slash Columbus lot, you'll be looking at around two hundred and thirty spaces. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Josh and assist with any further questions we might have.
One thing I do want to clear out, this downtown parking inventory map shows we'll be adding about a hundred spots over here to the judicial building, which right now is construction staging. That'll obviously be open once we deliver money, so that'll be adding around another hundred spots to this area. And then it's also, which includes a lot of the city, is going to be repaving near the steakhouse. I just want to make sure we're aware that some of these spaces are not ready to turn over a little shortly. So with that, that's really our presentation. We think this is the best option for the community. We're working closely with the administration. And before we guys sign, we ask for your consideration if it allows to disorganize this.
Real quick, on the angle parking, I've already lost my Christmas gift from my parents, but one, one thing that we've done on the angle parking is we elected to make them a little bit wider, approximately a foot per spot, which has cut down the number of spots on the square, but they're more user-friendly as people seem to be buying bigger vehicles and the baby boomers are the largest group in our population. And as they continue to age, we just give them a little bit more space to come downtown and spend their money and have a little bit bigger angle parking to place their vehicle. So I've filled it some calls on that, and that's part of the reason why we could chunk those to get more spots. But I think that defeats the purpose of friendly parking. Do you have any questions, Ryan?
I mean, I have a couple of nickel and dime questions, but not regarding this. I've had a couple of comments, like for instance, you guys will be tearing out a lot of stuff, including the lighting on the square. Are you planning to put the same lighting back? I think we might make sure that they don't...
We don't want this match, Mike.
So we will be giving you, the city, the old ones to use for parks, and we will be replacing it with like similar fixtures that we work with the city to make sure that we get the right angle.
Okay, that's acceptable. I did have a question, and this is directed to Gary. Gary is the city engineer. What are your thoughts on these plans? Do you like them? Do you have any of them, or do you...
As a contractor in general, referring to the two different orders plus the one proposal. First of all, speedily.
Agreed.
That value and everything that you do, both the contractors and the public, and not changing it from month to month. You've got to recognize what you see, continue for four months, which you're going to be done. So the recommendation of the city would be that expedient schedule, which is basically four months.
The shortest form, yeah, I would agree with that, and that's the feedback that I received as well. I don't know about you, Kelly, but somebody always is very good about talking to folks. Folks I've talked to have said they prefer the shorter, more aggressive schedule. But I know people, people are all affected differently.
Sure. My question is, probably not for you, Josh, but I'm not certain who in the room is going to answer this, but is there an incentive or to get it done by the date? Or is there, I mean, is there pros and cons to not getting it done by the date? I mean, can we set something out there as an incentive, or...
Will can correct anything that I may be wrong, but contractually, there are, that part's already taken care of. We can always go back and ask that, if we have the goodwill or aren't able to change that. In talking with our contractor, they said, it's kind of a mixed bag. You can listen to those, you can even test the penalties. But if somebody's not going to hit their incentive date, and they've got no incentive to keep pushing forward, now let's go back to dragging their feet. And so in this case, having the goodwill of a contractor who does a lot of municipal work, a general contractor who does a lot of municipal work, or putting their reputations online, is good of insurance policy to that.
Unfortunately, if the very general contractor, if you start August one, if they work six days a week and weather permitting, and keeps it going strong, and if they bring us in first part of November, everybody's going to be happy. If they work five days a week, and then in November they overshoot, work behind date law, we need to work six days a week, now we've got bad weather, it doesn't get accomplished. You're not the ones going to have the average merchants downtown, it's going to be us. And I want to set a kind of guidance and guarantee that the merchants are going to be able to beat that by Thanksgiving. I mean, and I've made that clear again. I think the plan's great, I think it'll be wonderful once it's done, but we need some kind of guarantee for our merchants.
Yeah, totally understand that. And I think that, like I said, we wouldn't be standing here if we didn't have a contractor that felt as confident as we do that they could complete this work in this amount of time. To us, that Thanksgiving's not an option, that is the drop dead, and we would love to meet that day. We all know that there's weather that we can't control, and this is all exterior work. Like Josh said, we will, we've already had conversations with our contractor about working Saturdays, working weekends to make up lost time if we have weather during the week. I think we just have to communicate that also with the city. I know there are noise ordinances, want to make sure we're staying within that, but...
As long as you're not working past ten o'clock by night, noise according to this shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
And as the contract means we get, you're going to work six days a week to get this project done. That's my view.
Yeah, I mean, we're going, we're definitely going. We've had those conversations with them about what we need to, but we feel confident that we can, we can make that happen, otherwise we wouldn't be presenting this option. I think as a contingency plan, the big thing that is, that we could run into at the end is asphalt plates shutting down, which is why in those other options we discussed in the public meetings, it really draws that process out because then you're waiting for asphalt and you don't know if you're going to get that at the end of March, beginning of April, whatever it may be. But if worst case scenario, we did run into a scenario where we had a normal amount of weather days, there would be also an option to still turn it over with just binder and not the finished asphalt surface. That way, we'd get it prior to that Thanksgiving, we'd do temporary striping and then come back that next year and do the finished surface. If we were to come back, we wouldn't do, take all of it at once, we'd phase it since that parking would be open to the public. But that's a contingency plan that we would have as well.
But that's all the more reason to work six days a week at the very beginning to get it, as the asphalt pans hard.
Sure, understood.
Frank, sorry to go back to you. So I have two other things kind of unrelated to each other, but number one, has any consideration been given to somehow compensating the business owners on the square for this time? I mean, I'm thinking about especially some of the retail businesses on the square. Can we give them a tax credit? Can we, what can the county do to, even in some small way, make up for what very well could be something that's very disruptive? I hope not catastrophically.
Let me add one thing. There is a project that the county, the city, we're together with the chamber in Morgan County, travel, Megan, Mark actually came up with the idea. It's going to be a project called Worth the Long.
It's going to be a project called Worth the Lawn. It's very similar, Megan, where Rissell had a program that's called Brave the Barricades. There is an error type, kind of catch you. I like Megan's Worth the Lawn. And we've not got all the details planned out yet, but it's something that if you visit downtown merchants, you get a passport, stamp, whatever, and at the end, if you met all the qualifications, they're going each week or whatever, please put a pile in, order will be dropped.
Sure.
And hoping with what the county and city are putting in, and we're going to have the first, second, and third place. Again, that's to try to give incentives for people coming downtown and supporting the businesses.
Yeah, I, to me, and I'm not a business owner downtown, but my heart goes out for anybody who's affected by something outside of their control. I just think, you know, property taxes, for instance, if all of a sudden my property becomes unusable and I'm still paying Uncle Second or Uncle Brian for the use of the property, that kind of puts a little assault on the wound. So I don't know what, I'm not a legislator, unfortunately.
And we've not legislated anything like that. And then, correct me if I'm wrong, but the sidewalks will always be open.
Sure.
So that's part of the campaign, so.
Okay.
Well, is accessible to use the sidewalks?
Well, I would say that I would love for some kind of consideration for that to be given if there's a way. I really like the, I've got Brave, Worth the Lawn, that's what it is. I got Brave the Barricade in my brain now. I love that idea, I think it's great, and it's a little outside of my scope of responsibility, but I do see that as a difficult, a difficult thing. The other question was, when this is all done, the city of Martinsville has always had a good relationship with the courthouse property, and it's been used for a number of things, including Fall Follies Festival and various other things. What, how is that going to be treated going forward? Is that something that we will still have use of as a city? Is it going to be off limits? Where do we fall on that? Can we get on the record?
Excellent question. Part of the rendering is when we redo the lawn, we're looking at, you know, upgrading the interiors where you don't have the temporary boxes that you normally associate when the carnival comes into town for the Fall Follies Festival. The city streets have always been just that, the city streets. So I can only speak for myself, with three years left on my term, and after all the changes, probably thirty years left in my political career, and so I can't put the words into the other two commissioners' mouths, but I think we've all talked about it, we're in agreement. We know the importance of the Fall Follies Festival, we know the importance of the Thursday night antique car shows. You know, I've talked to Brad Rowe, who's got a huge hand in that on, you know, maybe we shut down in the future, after all the construction, maybe the Jefferson Street or the angle parking, or it's going to have to be changed somewhat, but it's still being able to be used by outside events. And I don't think, you know, the Fall Follies Festival is even easier than the car show only in another factor, because we shut down the whole square. So, you know, they won't be on the interior, the version stamp won't be on the interior, but it could be in the parking. So I don't, after the whole thing is completed, I don't see that being a problem. And I will tell you over the years, having been on the Fall Follies Festival more than years ago, some merchants love it when we come into town for that weekend, others don't. So it goes both ways, but as far as if they want to come and apply, as they always have, I didn't have a problem after the instructions that were allowing those types of events to come back. I encourage it because we...
The same way that they are currently.
Yeah, yeah, you know, and I believe, I didn't have to come in front of this board, but I had to come in front of the city council. And I've said, when this all started before bought one of the judicial center, we had other Morgan County communities offer us land to move the judicial center there. And I can't think of anything that would kill the downtown quicker than to totally destroy it, to get rid of the courthouse and the judicial center. And people will have to walk a walk, but as I said in both of the two meetings, I don't know how to address, you know, if the concern, you know, of if I drive by the candy kitchen, and this was the example I used, because I know John all my life, and there's not a parking spot there, do I pass the candy kitchen, or do I go in and get my chocolate muffets all in a chocolate shake? But the same person will go to Walmart, park all the way in the back forty, and walk three blocks to get a gallon of milk. And so there are some limitations, and we, I want candy kitchen to be here for another hundred years, though John and I won't be. And, you know, as a commissioner of the whole county, but my district is right here, and I am a politician. So trust me, I want all the businesses on the square to succeed. This way's happy, and that's why I had to go get people to do this every day and make promises and, because I told you, I've already been told if the cookie store's messed up, I'm going to have to move in with the mayor or someone else, because I'm obviously going to kick me out. So there's hidden incentive and pressure that you won't be getting into tonight. Those were an excellent two questions. Any other questions?
No further questions for me.
Thank you.
So we're not being asked to approve anything or simply consider it tonight. It's whatever you want to do. If you want to make a motion to approve it tonight, you can. If you want a table so you can think about it till the twenty-seventh, you can do that
Kelly, I'm in favor of the shorter, more, well, even with Gary's recommendation, I don't know what your thoughts are.
No, I've looked at the PowerPoint, I've spoke to businesses downtown, I think we need to go with the preferred plan, yeah. So I'll make a motion that we accept the preferred plan for the downtown parking traffic.
I would second that motion.
Motion made, seconded to approve the preferred plan, which is guaranteed delivery before Small Business Saturday in November, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Sewer adjustments this evening, we have two sixty South Grant Street, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-two cents. Seven ten North Jefferson Street, a hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents. Five forty Valley Yard Drive, a hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-three cents. We received information on these prior to tonight's meeting.
I don't have any comments or questions. Have a motion made, seconded, presented.
No, seconded.
Motion made, seconded to approve the sewer adjustments as presented this evening. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Next round of meeting, the order of works will be on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh. This will change because of the morning delay, and it will be at six thirty during the council chambers.
Thank you, Kelly.
Yes, yeah, thank you.
If you have any questions, feel free to reach out. Wait, they signed the sewer adjustments. You can give them to me and I'll get them to have them tomorrow.
Okay.
Now, how do I get out of the number? What's that? Oh, no, it's not the C team, but I know I've left my pen, I borrow a pen, I'll get back to you.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, May twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the Marco County Council, meeting, and this is why everybody called for it. At this time, I would like to invite Pastor Rick Bailey from Liberty Church Church to come forward tonight, open us in prayer, and if you remain, send your pledge of allegiance.
Father, in the name of Jesus, we pray tonight for your wisdom. We pray for your spirit to be here and to direct every decision that needs to be made that would be in your will, and we ask that your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Randy, please call the votes.
John Badger.
Present.
Suzie Licks.
President.
Ben Mayhem.
Josh Baron.
Present.
Dan Miller.
Present.
Phil Deckard, second.
Present.
Phil Deckard, senior.
Present.
Mary, we have a court.
We have an agenda that I did not report to the court's office. Do we have any...
I'm prepared to give a quick update on just some payroll and HR items that we've been doing recently, so I just wanted to let the council aware. Recently, we've updated our timekeeping software to just a new system that we're transitioning all departments on. It'll make payroll just a little more time efficient and a little easier for all the employees to have their time cards and things like that, so just by way of an update for that. And then additionally, with HR, we are in the process of updating and just providing all of the OSHA annual trainings that those are required. So we're getting those scheduled out for the remainder of the year. So just by way of an update for you from the court's office.
Or is there some added expense because of this?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Any questions for Randy? Prior to tonight's meeting, you were sent minutes of the Monday, April twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Both can tap their hands.
Stuck in.
No motion made, seconded to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Mr. Coffey, do you want to explain the resolution as before this meeting?
What you have before you this evening is a resolution two zero two five, pass zero seven zero eight. It's reaffirming the city of Martinsville's policy concerning our appearance to federal code regarding to cost reimbursement contracts. So I understand this, we went through, are still going through the audit of the city, and in that, the auditors had requested that... And in that, the auditors had requested that we pass a resolution that would affirm our adherence to the federal code regards to any cost reimbursement contracts where we receive federal funds. There was language placed in last year on a resolution that all contracts moving forward would contain certain language as to cost reimbursement contracts. But the State Board of Council also has passed a second resolution as regards that. So that's what you have before you this evening for consideration.
I make a motion that we accept Resolution 2025 dash 0708.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve Resolution 2025 dash 0708. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post no, motion carries. Also, you were sent this evening copies of the pennies for review. Are there any questions or comments regarding these complaints?
I just have a quick question. The Portland mortgage claim, it says Southview Drive, what was that for?
I'm going to assume that was the RDC purchasing the house.
So that was the RDC purchasing the house? Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the claims as presented.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the claims as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post no, motion carries. Are there any comments from the council this evening?
I'd like to ask Police Chief Lang if you still have any issues with the police department at this point? Do I understand you had two upstairs bathrooms that weren't working, is that correct?
At periodic times, we have had issues with plumbing in general. But those seem to have been corrected, at least at this point. We did meet with Envoy last week, and they gave us their assurance that they could correct all the issues that we are dealing with. Most of them are cosmetic, I don't know if life threatening. But as with any new building, there's usually cases that you have to work out, and that's what we're doing.
And so Envoy said they would correct that and take care of that.
Yes, we had a productive meeting from that one side.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public this evening? If not, all non-emergency city offices and services will be closed on Monday, May 26, for the Memorial Day holiday. Additionally, utility office and transfer station will be closed on Saturday, May 24, in service of the holiday. Those who had a normal capacity on Monday, it will be picked up on Tuesday, May 27. Also, due to the Memorial Day holiday, our next regular meeting of the council will be on Tuesday, May 27, at 7 o'clock. Another business, we are adjourned.